Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you all. Before we get started, Councilmember Johnson is joining us on Skype from Tucson, Arizona, and I'd like confirmation that, Courtney, you can hear us? Courtney, can you hear us? Ms. Johnson, can you hear us? We have an issue. Should we hang, why don't you hang up and try to call back, or?
Hey, Aaron, I can only hear you through veranikus. You guys are really cutting out on the Skype. So, but the veranikus is like 10 seconds or more behind, so.
Tell me when you can hear me.
I can hear you, Mike, but you sound like you're a million miles away.
So, she can hear me? Okay, that's good. Alright, let's move on then. If we could get a motion to approve, I'd also like to add that all of our votes this evening will be done by roll call, so that we can identify each individual's vote. Holy Hannah.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Henry?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Do we have anything that is not on the agenda for resident comments and/or questions? Mr. Wigan, anything you'd like to inquire about? Okay, good, good. I was trying to cut you off. We have no reports, we have no public hearings. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Did we lose Councilmember Johnson? We should pause so that we have fairness all the way through. So, when we do this, Mr. Attorney, sir, I should verify that she can hear us each and every time? Okay?
Hello?
Got it.
Courtney, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, you're real echoey.
What'd she say? I'll just give this one second. Do we have to be able to see, or can we just hear? Have to be able to see?
Can you still not see me, Aaron?
Glad the attorney's here. Alright, could I get a motion for recess, and we'll take 10 minutes and try to figure this out?
Motion.
There's a motion by Councilmember Henry and a second by Councilmember Mock for a 10-minute recess. Suppose we have to do a roll call?
Councilmember Johnson?
Can we do it just by people here, since that's why we're doing it? I'll call a recess as the mayor for 10 minutes. Thank you. I didn't know I could do that. Wow, I have a ton of that. Personal?
Not personal, but I think at this point you've got 15, 17 minutes invested in it. It's not working.
Do we leave this on, or turn it off?
Well, I think the courtesy would be to tell her we just can't get it to work, and we're sorry, so we've got to cut you out.
No, I mean, Aaron, talk to her. Alright, so, I'm just gonna bring the meeting back to order. Do that, and then I'm also gonna explain that the technology did not work out. So, we, Ms. Johnson is in Tucson right now, and the technology did not work. We do need to have her be able to see us. We'd be able to see her, as well as both parties be able to hear. We weren't able to accomplish that, so we will be moving forward with the four councilmembers up here. We do not need to do roll call moving forward. Correct.
Alright, can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilmember Monroe.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are now moving on to unfinished business, which we have none, and we have new business. We're looking at the Broadway City Hall project bid award. Mr. Merrick, sir?
Thank you, Mayor, and, excuse me, thank you, Mayor and City Council. On April 19th, the city opened bids for the Broadway City Hall project. The council followed up on May 3rd and May 7th to discuss those bid results and discuss the financial impacts to the project. Since the project came in, $215,000 over the estimated budget. Kraus Anderson, along with Wold and staff, participated in some dialogue with the council on possible cost-cutting measures related to architectural building features, building systems, and partially completing certain spaces within the building. The council also discussed the inclusion of $300,000 that was dedicated within the city's long-term financial plan, $150,000 from both the water and sanitary sewer funds. Both of those contributions are included in the long-term financial plan, but however, were, have not been discussed as a financial revenue source within the, kind of, the project dialogue. They've been, kind of, held back should the need for them arise, and so that was discussed with the council. At the May 7th meeting, the council did have a discussion about rejecting or accepting certain work scopes, specifically HVAC, plumbing, electrical, and earthwork. The council did provide some guidance to the staff relating to allowing them to reject or move forward with the redesign and rebid of certain work scopes in consultation with Kraus Anderson. Staff did not move forward with any of that work. Upon discussion with Mac Willamson, with Milka Hubert-Chadine, he advised the council, or advised staff, not to proceed with a redesign and rebid until that work scope for that area was rejected, and since the city attorney Larry Harris was unavailable, we worked with Mac on that, and Larry concurred with that recommendation when he returned. Since that time, staff has worked with Kraus Anderson and Wold, specifically in the resolution that you have before you tonight, there's a recommendation from both staff and Kraus Anderson to accept all the bids, with the exception of the HVAC bid. There'd be a proposal, or a recommendation to reject the HVAC in favor of a redesign to a gas-fired forced air system. That in connection with a means and methods change on the earthwork. There's, as we discussed in previous meetings, a need for a temporary retaining wall for a safety aspect. We believe once the bids are accepted, we can start a dialogue with the earthwork contractor on ways to construct that differently along Spring Creek. We believe the, some changes can, excuse me, will provide an estimated savings of about $125,000. That in conjunction with a possible contribution from the water and sanitary sewer funds can close that gap once you receive the new HVAC bid, plus the city council has the option to use a special capital project fund, which has a balance of $286,000 approximately in that fund for use. In your packet, you'll see a bid recommendation letter from Kraus Anderson, along with a resolution accepting all the work scope bids, with the exception of the HVAC bid. That has been reviewed by the city attorney, and then we have Dave Schultz and Jonathan Loze with Kraus Anderson and Wold respectively to answer any questions the council might have, so.
We'll open it up to questions. Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Anyone have any questions on the bids, or as we're moving forward at this point? Hot seat.
Do you guys feel that the earthwork will be able to come in within the range that was set forth earlier? As, as can, as far as not doing the, the temporary retaining wall?
What we're seeing is that we could probably reduce some of the retaining wall. We'll still have to do some of it, but we will go into the levee somewhat and basically take some of that levee down in order to make our excavation setbacks work, and then rebuild it.
Then are you gonna go with plates in there too, then, in the meantime?
Yes.
I don't care what you're doing with it. I just want to make it work. Let's get going. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 115-18, a resolution awarding and rejecting certain bids for the Broadway City Hall project.
Motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any further discussion or comments? I have a couple. Number one, I wanted to thank Kraus Anderson. The last meeting, you guys stayed after and faced the music, and I appreciate that. Jonathan and Wold, thank you for helping to make things work. And actually, the big thank you that I have is to Brian Skoak, who really became an engineer and an architect all at the same time, and trying to help through this project. And while that's part of the scope that we expect of our great people, in my opinion, it went above and beyond, and both with the heating, as well as the earthwork. I don't personally work for Kraus Anderson or Wold, but I would probably consider some kind of bonus, but, I mean, that's just me. But that's just me, I mean, keeping it all happy, you know? So, any other comments, questions? So, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's go, boys. No more.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, before Dave and Jonathan get cut loose, I asked Dave if he could just give a real high-level message to the council and community on expectations for the next few weeks, as far as what we should see at the site, construction schedule, etc.
Yeah, you're really starting to take over now, aren't you?
Yep. So, what we'll be doing is we'll start issuing contracts to the contractors and start gearing up to get started on this. We'll have some different approvals that we'll be chasing down, and it'll take a couple of weeks to get all the insurance in place and contracts executed and everything like that, so that will start right away. And in the meantime, too, we're in, we'll be in a, for the HVAC, we'll be in a design process for probably two to three weeks, and then we'll be selecting a bid date and getting ad for bids and everything out, which will be approximately, we got approximate bid date of maybe the end of, end of June, right around 6:28 possibly.
6:28 for the bids on the HVAC?
Yes, correct.
That's when they'll go out?
That, that's when we would actually open them and read them.
Awesome.
Yep. Right around that, that's tentative date. And then, assuming a standard schedule, we'd probably be back to recommend award on the 7/18 meeting.
Award for the HVAC?
Correct.
When do you anticipate the first wrecking ball starting?
It depends on our approvals on everything to get going, so, I mean, I would say we'd be shooting towards the early part of June, first couple of weeks.
Cool.
Would be what we're going for here.
Cool. Thank you. Anyone, based upon that, anybody from the council, or anyone have questions, comments? Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. So, we are now on to Ironwood Park pedestrian bridges. Advertisement of bids, my, my good close personal friend, Andrew Buddy.
Thank you, Mayor.
From Boltman Mink.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, gentlemen. Sorry.
The, the project in front of you is for two pedestrian bridges that are located up at the Ironwood Park, which is up just west of Carver Elementary School, and these two bridges are, kind of, shown in a figure up above where the, excuse me, the West Bridge will connect with a practice field that is up there. There are also two other sport fields. The West, East Bridge connects the trail generally east and west through the site, ultimately with Jonathan Carver Parkway and potentially future trails to the west as well. Both of these pieces were left out, or were not built as part of the school and the site, and so the, the city is responsible to, to bid and construct these. The project would consist of bridges similar to this style. These are just examples. We are leaving the project open to try and get competitive pricing from both wood bridge manufacturers and steel bridge manufacturers. We've looked at pricing. Both of them come in very similar, and so the wood option here on the left is a, generally made of wood, and then would have a concrete abutment on that, so slightly different than what you see. The abutments are what hold the main span up. That's intended more for easy maintenance for the city and minimize any long-term maintenance costs, and then the other...
Minimizing long-term maintenance costs with wood? We don't have to... Well, yeah, the abutments, but the wood bridge itself, we'd have to maintain.
Both bridges would require maintenance, yes.
What's the maintenance on the span bridge, the truss bridge?
On the steel one?
Yeah.
If it's, kind of, similar to where it's shown now, where it's, kind of, the rust color, it's not painted, and you just, kind of, let that patina.
It's patinad.
Correct.
It's patinad.
Tinad, yes. And that is the color of the bridge, and long-term, there isn't as much maintenance for a steel bridge as there would be a, a wood one. The wood one would require...
Would wood require?
The wood bridge would require more maintenance. It could be, it is treated lumber, and so, but just with that, that does decay over time.
Okay.
You can have abrasion issues on the bridge. If snowplows are going across, it's snowmobiles. I don't know if that's allowed, but on other bridges, that is, kind of, where, where they see issues on, on wood decks.
But the wood one's gotta be a lot cheaper than the metal one, right?
It's not.
From what we're seeing, the pricing is very, very close to each other.
Wow, that's amazing.
You know, almost every snowmobile trail up in Bayfield is the...
Prefab.
Truss prefab. Every bridge on the snowmobile trails. So, anyway, yeah.
Oh, I see. So, behind my house on the new section of trail, we have this prefab.
Continuity.
Yep. And it's fantastic, and I don't, I can't remember how many years it's been, and it's one, two, three, something like that. Do you know, I know this is a far-out question for you, but what the county might think for a maintenance schedule on something like that? Because when I look at it, I can't imagine what maintenance they have right now.
The, I, I don't know exactly. The, the first maintenance is gonna be when you start seeing weathering or decay of the bridge, generally speaking. That could be 10 years, that could be 20 years, it could be 30 years, depending on the elements and how they react to it.
So, you went out for bids for both?
No, we just, we prepared engineers' estimates for both.
Okay.
To, kind of, get a better understanding of which option the city may have a preference from. We can't really define, because the costs are so close.
If the costs are close, I have a much bigger preference for the prefab.
Okay.
Personal. Glenn?
Six, well, the prefab.
The prefab, I was just looking for the agenda statement, though it says that the city will award the lowest bidder with no preference for the structural material.
I know, but if we have a preference and they're the same, I'd rather say that we have a preference. Do you have a preference?
What if they're different, though?
Yeah. If there is a preference, we would like that preference now.
Yeah, the prefab is unanimous.
Okay.
For, unless the wood is way cheaper, but I don't, as you said, that it isn't. Yes, Mr. Harris?
If you're going to do that, you probably only want to go out to bid, for bid on the steel, because if you...
Well, that's what I think we would, yeah.
Correct.
That's what we're doing, right?
If that's the direction, yes. We would just build the steel one, then it's very clear to the contractors what their pricing.
Yeah. I also, I have two questions. The first is, on the East Bridge, the East Bridge is absolutely needed. I've run over there, and it's, kind of, why you're our new engineer.
Kind of creates a gap in the whole connection.
You can't get across.
Yep.
Is that true with the West Bridge as well? Or is the West Bridge, is it needed, needed? Brian, you're shaking your head yes, or nodding your head?
Yeah, that bridge is actually needed to use, that sport field up there, that practice field.
Ah, good, got it. Okay, fair. Thank you. That was it.
Okay. So, the project would be funded through park dedication fees. They'll be, we'll, we'll, kind of, proceed with the, the steel option based off the council direction, and with that, I'll leave it open to any further questions.
Does anyone have any other questions of our engineer?
Just was wondering, what is the estimate?
Yeah, good question.
Just north of $200,000.
For both bridges, or each?
Total.
Total.
Total. Both bridges combined, that's total project cost, so.
Thank you.
And we have enough in the park dedication fund to cover that right now?
Yes. Nice. Well played. Alright, I'd entertain a motion if anyone would like to make one.
I'll make a motion to approve the plans and specifications and authorize advertising for bids for the Ironwood Park pedestrian bridges in the steel prefab.
Fashion. There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's part of why you're our engineer. Pardon? Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 9.3, Cassau 61, 41 corridor study, resolution of support. Mr. Buddy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Over the last two years, Carver County, Mindott, and the municipalities of City of Carver, Chaska, and Chanhassen have all, kind of, been involved in a corridor study of County Road 61, which generally runs from Jonathan Carver Parkway in Carver to the west, in the west, and then out to Bluff Creek Drive on the east side, and then also included 4, trunk highway 41 from County Road 10 down to the river. The study included over 100 meetings that they had with many stakeholders, open to residents and adjacent property owners, cities, county, and Mindott, and over the course of that, they ultimately came up with this corridor study recommendation, and the county is looking for a resolution of support from each of the cities for the corridor study. You can see that the project is, is fairly large. It's actually broken out into 28 separate projects over the course of the next 20 years. I'm gonna focus mostly just on the west segment that affects the city of Carver. One item that they looked at was trails, so the green, green lines you see on here, the dashed ones are either existing trails, or the solid ones are, excuse me, the dashed ones are future trails, the solid ones are existing trails. They've identified to put a trail on the north side of County Road 61 that connects in with Jonathan Carver Parkway. This would include a separate pedestrian overpass over 212, and would continue down the corridor and ultimately connect through grade separation crossings that you see in the blue, blue dashes, and then would connect in with the regional trail over to the east. I'm just giving little snapshots here, so this is just at the intersection of Jonathan Carver Parkway and Cassau 61. Generally speaking, what they built as part of the 212 project is adequate over there for the long-term vision, except for the addition of the Batumanus Trail that I mentioned. As we take a step further east, this is at the intersection of Mount Hope Road. For the city of Carver, this is a very important intersection. This is a future collector for the city. With Mount Hope that takes it down to the downtown, it's important to the city of Chaska, because they will also have a collector going to the north, so that intersection will generally stay where it's at, with the addition of some medians and turn lanes to just help facilitate safety and mobility through that intersection.
And did you say there's gonna be a trail on the north side of that?
I believe, I'll, I'll go back there. They... Yes. Boy, I, I don't think it's shown in this figure, yes, but that, that was the intent, was to have a trail on the north side and connect with the regional trail. The next intersection is at Lano Lane, and this one actually has two options. There's a lot of dialogue back and forth through all of this. So, the, the study leaves two options out there yet. They have not decided it. So, this one is option one, where it generally reconstructs Lano Lane at its existing location. The option two shifts Lano Lane to the west approximately, several hundred feet to a quarter mile. What it would do, then, is close Lano Lane at its current location. It create a, an access, a full access, both for the city of Carver, that's on the south side, and the city of Chaska on the north side. And then the blue dashed line there, kind of, represents more of just local road networks that would connect with either future development or Lano Lane as it exists today. So, both of those options are still on the table.
Okay, so, the option two would go to the west side of the collector pond, and then basically be the body driveway that's existing, and that would run down so that there would be access to the four houses that are up there? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes. I mean, this is just very high concept.
Got it.
With the anticipation of development and stuff, it's just a very high concept. The, the need is to push it further west, as is shown here in option two. That will help serve development very well for the city of Carver. It actually helps very well for the city of Chaska as well, because otherwise they would not have an access...
For the north.
In this vicinity, to the north, so. And it...
Negotiate with Chaska, what's it worth, Tom? But it doesn't matter, it's an option. They're gonna decide.
And it, it's likely gonna be development-driven.
Yep.
The first person, the first developer to come knock on the door is gonna force the decision, so.
And Lano Lane is knocking as we speak, so.
Moving to the next intersection east, this is at the existing County Road 40 and County Road 61 intersection. Generally, alignment-wise, it will stay about as is. They would just do improvements to, to restrict access. This would be called, what's called, a three-quarter intersection, so it would restrict vehicles that are heading eastbound on County Road 40 to be able to take a left and head north up the hill towards Fleet Farm. So, it restricts that left-turning movement. From a safety perspective, this, this is a very challenging intersection. They've looked at many different options, roundabouts, different alignments. It's just really challenging because of the topography and the existing...
And we're not willing to give it up.
Correct. So, just looking at some of the timeframes, the areas shown in green in, generally, the downtown of Chaska are slated to be built in 2021 through 2022. The portion in red, which generally affects the city of Carver, is slated for 2029 to 2030, so quite a ways out there yet. Other segments would fill those gaps, either in Chaska or towards Chanhassen. This is a little close.
Chanhassen.
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 Accent, the wrong syllable.
No, it's perfect.
Looking at the west segment a little closer, it's estimated to be around $12 million from crossing over 212 all the way to the east to the existing intersection with 44. That is likely, that number likely, or that number does include county funding and lack, local participation, excuse me, from the cities. What those numbers are yet, it's above and beyond this study. The areas in purple are stuff that will be, are road maze segments or connections that would be driven by development, and... So, and that's the, that's the last of the presentation, so they finished the study over the last two years in, a couple of months ago, and so we're just looking for support from the city, if that's the path you choose, and then going forward, it would just be implemented of, implementation of the 20-plus projects that are out there. That, I'll leave it to any questions.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any... Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Buddy?
I have a question. I'm not sure that I understand correctly, so there's going to be a Batuminas Trail going over two twelve by Fleet Farm? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a sidewalk on one side now. Is this, I'm confused to
Figure might work. There is not a sidewalk along sixty-one the entire way, I don't believe.
No, there isn't.
There isn't.
What I saw was the pedestrians crossings were going to be at sixty-one and forty intersection, not up by Fleet Farm.
Mm-hmm, I'm just trying to, I'm not clear on the location of where that trail is going.
Oh, it would go from Jonathan Carver Parkway on the north side of the roadway, on a separate bridge over two twelve, just a pedestrian bridge, it wouldn't be part of the roadway right there.
Okay.
And it would extend all the way down to somewhere down the bluff. To be honest, I'm not crystal clear as to how that terminates. I know they wanted to make connections with the regional trail. I don't know if this extends all the way into the City of Chaska or not.
The way that I saw it, it goes down and connects to the trail to Chaska. Either way, they'll make it work. They'll make it work.
To be clear, this isn't a trail on Jonathan Carver Parkway, it's a trail off of sixty-one
Okay.
that crosses over two twelve.
Okay, that's why I'm very confused, because I'm like, that is a north-south, okay. So it's on sixty-one. Will it be on the north side, northern side?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I needed, thank you.
So my question is, all of this is cool. A, do you agree with it? Do you feel that we're in a good position? Which I do, after looking at it.
I do, from an engineering perspective, yes.
Second question is, is that you mentioned that this is development-driven. Okay, that's general. Are there benchmarks to say that if we hit X, this will be built? Do they have benchmarks built in, or is it just general? This is development-driven?
I'm not aware of any benchmarks.
When you, when we do this support and you move it forward and you have those meetings, can you at least mention on a nonofficial basis that it'd be nice to know if there were benchmarks, because there are certain parts of this area that will grow? And we'd love to have their support with some kind of benchmark if we can.
Okay, yes.
Rather than have to go back and beg and say, well, what's the benchmark? That's all I ask. Any other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one sixteen dash eighteen, supporting the findings of the County Road sixty-one forty-one corridor study.
There's a motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Any further comments or questions? Concerns? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We should now move on to the two thousand nineteen improvement project and the feasibility study. Mr. Buddy, you're getting a lot going on today.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item is the twenty nineteen improvement project. We are looking for authorization to prepare a feasibility study, that is the next step in the process. We have met with residents over the last two weeks to have onsite meetings to talk about the project, try and get feedback, understand what they want in the project, whether it's sidewalks or drainage issues. We had two nights of meetings, specifically met at Kirchi Hill and Dietrich Drive. That's the neighborhood that's going to get sanitary sewer and water added to it, because currently they're on a well system and septic system. Then we also met on Sunny Ridge Drive, which would get generally a full reconstruction and the addition of concrete curb and gutter and storm sewer, and also on Elm Drive, which would get concrete curb and gutter and storm sewer. What happens at the end of Elm Drive will be evaluated as part of the feasibility study to better understand. There's a lot of good dialogue with the residents as to what they like about the area and what they vision that area to be and what ideas they have, so we'll look and evaluate some of those. And then it also includes paving of two alleys downtown between Fourth Street and Third Street, and one small segment of trail up along Spring Creek Drive near Mount Hope Road. The next step in this is the preparation of the feasibility study. We don't have the cost, that's what that goes through. Survey would be out to topographic survey the areas, so we get a good understanding what's out there for doing our preliminary design and cost estimates. And we anticipate it'd take probably about three months for us to finish the feasibility study. We would come back in the meantime, before it's finalized, and provide a little bit more feedback to the city council and some of the impacted residents through there, so that they're aware of what is happening as part of the, or proposed and included in the feasibility study. The project is potentially funded through Chapter four twenty-nine special assessments, so some of the benefiting property owners would be assessed. It also include funds from the sanitary sewer, the water fund, general funds, and/or bonds, depending on the total project costs. And as past practice, the city has engaged an appraiser to perform a special benefits analysis. We would do that in sync with feasibility studies, we can have that conversation right near the end of them both finishing, so we understand the whole story for impacted residents in the city going forward. With that, I'll leave it to any questions.
Har for the course, how much?
We don't know.
I'll make a motion to authorize the preparation of feasibility Preparation of a feasibility report for the twenty nineteen improvement plan.
There's a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any further comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a question for you. So in the council report here, it says that we, it will allow the residents to connect to city sewer and water. So do we allow them to connect at will, or they have to connect once we come through?
The ordinance requires them to connect. The duration of time that the city gives them is a prerogative of the council, so you could choose six months, you could choose a year. But the ordinance requires that if it's accessible to the property, that they must connect.
Has, are we aware that anyone has put anything new in in that area in some time? Do they have to, would they have to apply for a well permit or a?
They don't have to apply for a well through the city, or septic through the city, I don't believe, but no, all the septic systems out there are original, so they're about thirty years old now. There was discussion with some residents that they've invested money in well improvements. I don't recall if anyone had a new well. There may have been like one or two that have a brand-new well that's, I would say, two years old or something like that. So there might be one or two of them in there.
All right, just because I know that's a lot of output of money for a homeowner to do than to have to have another output of money to connect it to city water and/or sewer. They are allowed to keep their well for things like lawn watering and things like that?
City has allowed that in the past, and there was a lot of feedback to be able to do that.
This neighborhood has been notified before though about about being
Yes.
Correct, and in twenty thirteen, the city sent a letter out to the property owners at that time, notify them that
Yeah, so
Project was being planned for twenty nineteen.
It's not
Well, and we've actually had neighborhood meetings in there, neighborhood get-togethers where people have asked for it. I've never had anybody say that they didn't want it, but that's usually a part of it, too.
Yeah. I think if they do have the well for watering, since we've allowed it in the past, I don't see why we wouldn't allow the same thing here.
If we would allow what?
If, let's say, water your lawn with the well, it's not hooked up to your city, or to your home.
What we're talking about now is just a feasibility study. So I think we need to get to that motion. We can discuss that at another time.
I'll make a motion.
We already did.
Okay, let's, I'll vote for it then.
So there's a, I'm just trying to stop in a routine manner, so. Any other questions concerning the
Get back in here.
Any further questions concerning the motion at hand? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Meridian Fields, the name of your, oh, sorry, yeah, sorry. Meridian Fields Comprehensive Plan, otherwise known as Design Carver, Ms. Erin Smith.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, tonight we are reviewing a comprehensive plan amendment. So nothing project-specific tonight, just re-guiding the land. As I think we all are pretty well aware, the City of Carver does fall within jurisdiction of the Metropolitan Council, and it is a requirement that we have a future land use map that allows us to forecast what land might look like for development. So some examples of those, low-density, medium-density, high-density, commercial, industrial, et cetera. Currently, we're using our twenty thirty plan as we continue to work towards adoption of our twenty forty comprehensive plan. And as part of the planning process, communities can amend the land use map if for a reason such as development occurs, where the guidance is not correct on the land use map. It's a formal application to the Met Council. So again, there's no project-specific details tonight, just the land use guidance. The project is in for preliminary plat at this time. I anticipate it coming before council, likely in July.
Any questions?
No, I'm not done.
Oh, sorry.
I was just clicking through.
Get after it, that's a big pause.
Sorry. A little bit of context about the project location, so it's just south of Highway two twelve, south of Mel's Fleet Farm, and northwest of the elementary school. We really recently saw this project for annexation at the last meeting, so again, called Meridian Fields, development by D.R. Horton.
So, are
Still not done. So in the twenty thirty plan that we're operating under right now with our comprehensive plan, the property is guided for commercial use. And the request for the comprehensive plan amendment is to re-guide the property to low-density, which would be two to four units per acre. D.R. Horton is working on the development, Meridian Fields. It has a density right in the low three range, so three point zero six, I think, is in the staff report.
Which helps us with our overall density that the Met Council's requiring us have three.
It does, yes. So the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this project on the May seventeenth meeting. One property owner did come forward and have some comments, but generally supportive of the project, since it felt like a less intense user from commercial to low-density. A mailing was also provided, and notice ran in the Chaska Herald. Here's a visual representation of what we have in the twenty thirty plan, so you'll see it as red for commercial property. And in the draft twenty forty guidance, we do have it as low-density. So if there is a good time to do a comprehensive plan amendment, now is probably it. We can think about our map at a larger scale to relocate some of those commercial uses or the higher user based on this change. As part of the formal application to the Metropolitan Council, there is a review required by adjacent jurisdictions, so for the City of Carver, that is thirteen, they have a sixty-day review period, which will close in roughly a week, or May twenty-ninth. At that point, the entire application can be submitted to the Met Council for their review. They then have thirty days to provide comment and give a formal review. And again, we just saw annexation for this project. Once that's processed by the state, we will have land use authority and can move forward with a preliminary plat. This project has a lot of moving parts, so annexation, preliminary plat, and complex amendment are running pretty close, but again, tonight is just the comprehensive plan amendment. End.
End. Can't drop this mic. All right, so it's part of the process. It's one that we need to do, a lot of moving parts. We're in order where we need to be in order for this to go through. Any questions or comments from the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one seventeen dash eighteen, approving a comprehensive plan amendment for Meridian Fields.
It's a motion by Councilmember Monroe.
I'll second that.
And a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yep, thank you. You're really only forty-seven. Just kidding. All right, move it. All right, moving on to Carver Lions Donation, resolution of acceptance. Mr. Merrick, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet is a resolution, Resolution one eighteen eighteen, for the acknowledgement, acceptance of an appreciation for a donation from the Carver Lions Club. Typically, the council will accept donations via the consent agenda, however, as you can see by the resolution, this is a significant donation of twenty-five dol, not twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars. And the Lions are requesting that it be put toward the betterment of the kitchen facilities for the Broadway City Hall, so happy to answer any questions you might have on Resolution one eighteen dash eighteen.
Opens the door. Any questions, comments? Any motions?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one eighteen dash eighteen, acknowledging, acceptance, and appreciation for a donation from the Carver Lions Club.
There's a motion by Councilmember Mock, seconded by Councilmember Monroe.
I will second.
Any comments, questions? So I have no problem voting for this on two conditions, if you guys would agree to it. Number one, that there's no request for preferential treatment outside of anything that we would do for anyone else. And number two, no plaque. And I'd be more than happy to vote for this.
I can certainly go along with number one, the Lions. In our board discussion where they approved it, had absolutely an understanding that this donation was for the betterment of the community with no preferential treatment expected for the Lions Club.
Was there any discussion about a plaque?
Let me think back here. So there was discussion about having a plaque, that it was something that was typically done by any organization who gives something, nothing large, there's one on the outside of this building, I think that's pretty typical of what they'd be hoping for, would be something of that small size.
I agree with number one. I'm fine with no preferential treatment, I don't think anybody should get any preferential treatment. As for the plaque, I don't know why we couldn't come to some sort of compromise where maybe they could hang a plaque while they're doing one of their fundraisers there. Maybe it wouldn't be up all the time, but why shouldn't they let people know during a fundraiser that they helped?
Well, that would be no different than having any other probably banner, I guess, to
It would be like temporary, it wouldn't be there permanently. How's that for a compromise? Nobody compromises anymore.
Well, I think my compromise is, I will vote for this with number one, you guys agreed to, and number two, I, I'm very, I'm firmly believing that while the Lions do amazing things and are great in this community, I also think that there's a lot of other individuals, including all the residents within the city, that are making a huge commitment to this building. And I don't, I mean, fifty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars to me to get, I mean, I think everybody should have a plaque on the building then. I just, I'm not for at all any plaque on the building identifying City Hall as a donation from anyone or anything.
I agree with that sentiment.
Can you agree to vote for it if that is not part of it?
I just think the fact that they're giving twenty-five thousand this year and have pledged to give another twenty-five thousand next year to squabble over letting the Lions Club have a six-by-six-inch sign stating that they had something to do with it seems kind of a moot point.
While I appreciate the word squabble, I would also mention that Ellen Redman pays more than that every year to the city and doesn't have a plaque up. I can give my thought process on what good twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars can do to Funky Minds, or CCBYSA, or any other organization, but while we can talk back and forth, I've made two requests that I can vote for this if one or two, actually both one or two. And I've heard one, and if I can hear two, I will gladly vote for it.
I'll back with one and two.
I just, I guess I'd like to know if the Lions even care about having a plaque, because if they don't, then this is all moot. I mean, I vote for this resolution. That's what we've got.
So I did So I didn't hear that there would be no plaque on the building.
We didn't hear that there would be either.
No, but this is how things work. I'm asking to have that added to the motion, that there'd be no preferential treatment.
Then we'll need to vote down this, and you'll need to make a different motion.
Deal. So there's a motion on the table, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So motion doesn't carry, correct?
Yes, fails.
You have to do a roll call.
Yep. Roll call.
Councilmember Henry?
Nay.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Webb?
Nay. And I would make a motion that we accept the $25,000, acknowledging, acceptance, and appreciation for donation from the Carver Lions Club with the caveat that there is no preferential treatment and no plaque on the building.
And I will second that.
So there's a motion by Mayor Webb and a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? There's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye.
Any opposed?
I agree, need a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Councilmember Henry?
Aye.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Mayor Webb?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to City Council Communications, we would go to Councilmember Monroe.
I have nothing.
Councilmember Mock?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Henry?
We had a Parks Commission meeting, and we went over the 2040 plan briefly, and some of the stuff that we're gonna do for the parks and trails.
Anything good?
It's all good.
Anything you can share with us? Would you like Erin to share it with us? Sorry, Ms. Smith. Okay. Mr. Merrick, anything?
I just wanted to acknowledge Diane Schwab's work on the Carver Cleanup Day.
Yes.
I'm not aware, knock on wood, of any complaints or issues related to the weekend. She did a lot of work coordinating and preparing for that. And sometimes when things go really well, you don't notice them, and so I just wanted to thank Diane and the team that supported her for doing that work.
She's tremendous, and I would second that. But that wasn't a motion, but I would second it if it was. But I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. There you are on this week.